Morning. Hello, my name is Deborah Gross. I'm City Councilwoman for District Seven. Welcome to the City Council's Budget Hearings for 2021. Today, we are doing intergovernmental affairs, beginning with the Housing Authority. We'll be moving on to the Parking Authority and the SCA, the Sports and Exhibition Authority. We will start today with our Budget Office presentation, giving Council a summary of the Housing Authority, and then we will hear a presentation from the Housing Authority members. Mr. Strellick?
Sure, so the Housing Authority is with us first today. Housing Authority, the city of Pittsburgh, is a municipal corporation formed under the U.S. Housing Act of 1937. They're charged with providing decent, affordable housing for low-income persons. They provide publicly assisted housing comprised of traditional public housing, scattered sites, and housing choice vouchers. They currently have more than 18,000 Pittsburghers in their programs, plural, including 2,200 public housing units, and they provide oversight of additional 600 mixed-income units. Their purpose is to develop and make available affordable, safe housing to and to help families achieve the independence they strive for. Councilman Reverend Burgess is Council's representative on the Board of the Housing Authority. Some brief budget notes, because they only touch our city budget in a few spots. They provide about $830,000 in reimbursements for the bond for the 412 Boulevard of the Allies building. The city was able to get a lower rate than the URA or the Housing Authority, so we issued the debt, and then the URA and the Housing Authority reimburses us over the life of that debt. They also provide to the city $1.5 million for the Northview Heights Police Services. And a third note, within our budget document, there's a line item for nonprofit payment for services for about $440,000. All but $15,000 or $20,000 is from the Housing Authority. So their properties are obviously tax-exempt, just like the cities or the URAs, but they are authorized to continue paying what they would have paid in real estate taxes. So we just move our revenue from the real estate line item to the nonprofit payment for services line item. And with that, I'll turn it over either back to Councilwoman Gross or directly to the Housing Authority if they have anything to add.
Thank you, Mike. And yes, I believe we are starting, are we starting with you, Mr. McInley?
Yes, absolutely. Good morning, everyone. As mentioned, we are bringing to the Housing Authority, City of Pittsburgh's 2022 budget. Not sure what you guys know officially, but we do have a long process that goes back and begins in April each year that is reviewed by, every department has involvement in our budget. The budget, we believe, does allow us to meet our immediate tenant needs while still funding future development and modernization activities. Within this budget, our redevelopment activities for Laramore Phase Five, Laramore East Liberty Phase Five, Manchester Rad, also additional money for Bedford, Northview, and then two of our individual specific gap in PBV financing and acquisition rehab units. That totals approximately $27 million of the roughly $180 million budget that we have approved at our board with, you know, the city-selected board members. They have reviewed it and have approved it back in September. We do also have approximately another $23 million in there towards maintenance costs as well. At this time, I can open up for any questions. We do have some development team members here, our operations director, and of course, our budget team as well.
Again, I should have mentioned earlier, we're joined also by Councilwoman Strasburger. I don't currently see any other members in the Zoom room, but of course, they'll be able to review the hearing at any time. Councilwoman Strasburger, do you have any questions for the Housing Authority?
Good morning. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to the members, the staff of the Housing Authority for joining us today. I am going to do what is sort of characteristic of council members during budget season and ask some questions that might not be related to the city portion of the budget, which I understand is very small, and migrate into some other questions that I have that I think would be helpful for Council and for the public to understand. I was pleased to hear, even though it's not on our specific, you know, cheat sheet around what is included in the city portion of the budget. So I wasn't clear if it was city-funded or from other funds, additional budget for maintenance. And that brings me to the question that I think a lot of us heard when there was a media story around Northview Heights about the need for increased maintenance. And I'm not meaning to put you on the spot, I just haven't had the opportunity to sit down with the Housing Authority. I don't work very closely with the Housing Authority, and I personally, although I'm sure you've gotten these questions ad nauseam and discussed it again and again, it would be helpful for me and probably for other members of City Council who are going to be watching this or are tuning in elsewhere, and members of the public, to hear in your own words how... I'm not so interested in how we got there, I'm more interested in what the future looks like for Northview Heights and how you aim to improve conditions for the residents there.
I will actually probably turn this over a little bit to JW, but I do know that, obviously, we did give our response, and everything that was in the pictures and videos has already been fixed or taken care of. They were a little dated, the pictures. However, we are in the process of redeveloping the high-rise in Northview as the first part. I know, and JW from our team could probably elaborate more, I know there were some delays, as HUD rejected some of our initial submissions as far as where to put the new mid-rise. But that is the first step, building the new mid-rise, which is generally the elderly portion. And then we were going to work on, you know, redeveloping eventually the rest of the community. But I can turn it over, JW may have a little more information on where that kind of stands now.
Thank you. JW Kim, Director of Planning and Development for Housing Authority. Housing Authority has a plan for redevelopment of a high-rise building. We applied for tax credit to fund that replacement housing for high-rise. So the high-rise building is seriously distressed, severely distressed in terms of structural and other mechanics, and then also utilities. So we also have a plan for various fiscal improvements, capital improvements for the next three, four, five years. We have set aside about $11 million worth of capital improvements for next, until 2025. And we also submitted this information, detailed information, with the fiscal needs assessment and work order information and various facility services information to HUD recently. And they are also reviewing it, they're experts reviewing it, also we are waiting for their comments. But we have a detailed and very thorough plan for capital improvement for Northview High-Rise and then Northview Heights community overall. And we have a Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Marsha Grayson, she might add more to this community. So I'll stop here. Yeah, thank you.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mr. Kim. I do not have anything additional to add to what was stated. That was very accurate, what Mr. Kim stated. Thank you.
Thank you all. That's helpful to know. And I would just add that although we are different entities with different funding sources and different bureaucracies that we work through, when it comes to partnerships, I want to offer on behalf of Council that, you know, we can be an even greater partner to you and you to us by working even closer, more closely together. In addition to the partners that you have as different, as, you know, individual council members, Council as a whole can help be your advocates and your ears and eyes on the ground as necessary, because I don't think any of us want to get into a situation where we see another investigative story that takes us by surprise. And you want what's best for your residents, just like we do. We all have the same goal here. So to the extent that you need our support through a will of Council or letters of support for additional funding, for lobbying, for additional funding, for advocacy for additional funding, whatever it takes, I think we're in it with you. I think I can speak pretty honestly on behalf of at least majority of my colleagues that we're in it with you. So please call on us when the time is right for that.
Thank you very much.
I don't have any further questions. That was really it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I was muted the whole time there. Thank you, Councilwoman Strasburger. Did you guys hear me? Let the record show that we are also joined by Councilwoman Bobby Wilson. And I don't see other members at this time. Councilwoman Wilson, oh, and I also see President Teresa Kalesmith. Councilwoman Wilson, do you have any questions for the Housing Authority?
Yeah, sorry I was late. I showed up in chambers.
I thought we didn't expect anybody downtown today, so my apologies.
Sorry, I know there's some things I gotta do down here. Luckily, I have a little station in my office. So, you know, I guess regardless of, you know, if I seen the presentation, I was gonna ask some similar questions, take this opportunity to ask some similar questions that the council person just asked in terms of Northview Heights and also Presley High-Rise, because those were the two ones that failed inspection in my district. And so, you know, I know you all worked to fix some of those, you know, fail, some of the parts that, you know, made the inspection fail. But can you speak to the larger question of why that is? If, you know, if it is true that 90% of housing units in the nation pass, and we're gonna, you know, and then I see that you're willing to invest $11 million, like what are the barriers to, like what are the real barriers to bring in these units up to spec?
I'll have to defer to Marsha on that one. Marsha, can you answer more? Because that's more the REACT questions, as far as what, probably what scores and doesn't score and what gets docked.
Yes, good morning. My name is Marsha Grayson. As has been noted, part of the issue is the age of the vast majority of the buildings. The Housing Authority, most of our buildings are pretty old in structure, they are legacy buildings. And a lot of the buildings from the exterior, when HUD scores the buildings, they look at concrete, things of that nature. Inside the units, our units have passed. And so some of the comparisons, the legacy units with more modern units would be some of the reasons that we had some issues with the REACT scores.
So like, $11 million will go to what? And specifically, like Northview Heights and Presley High-Rise, the two, one of the two that continue to not make the mark?
JW may be able to answer. Well, Marsha, good, I'm sorry. I know a lot of that is interior, and we have done a lot of interior, quite a few million dollars' worth of interior work the last couple of years, but... Good, Marsha, I'm sorry.
No, we do have some projects that are currently going on within the building as well. And again, I would pivot to Mr. JW Kim regarding the various projects that are going on in the various communities, specifically, again, in Presley as well as in, as in Northview.
Yeah, if I could just ask JW, you know, so we know each other from the Choice Neighborhood planning meetings. I didn't realize you, I thought you came in from another side of HUD. But you work for Housing Authority?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, Councilman, yes. I'm working for Housing Authority and as a Director of Planning and Development. So we have various items, we can submit to you separately the list of items that we plan for next few years to improve the Northview Heights neighborhood, this community, entire community, not only high-rise. So we have various side work and interior work and landscaping and then doors and exterior seats.
Okay, well, I just want to stop because I just want to say that, like, yeah, I would definitely appreciate that. And, you know, specifically, just so I don't drag this on, you know, I know that there is an issue with maybe getting some contractors or hiring. I mean, is there ways that we can increase the hourly pay there to attract people or to do the work?
Definitely. I think the recent decision, the board decision or city's decision to rescind our residency requirements, I think that will, we expect that will boost the hiring of various maintenance and our facility services employees and as well as our project management, mod project management. So we expect to hire more, more staff and also contractors and construction managers, various levels. So that will improve next few years.
Yeah, it's just, you can see the challenge that my district faces where, on one hand, I'm part of a, I'm part of the Choice Neighborhood planning team, but then also, you know, I have, you know, we have these, like you said, they have some outdated units. For instance, you know, some units in Northview Heights and Presley High-Rise that aren't meeting the mark, and I'm just trying to keep track of that so that, you know, may its best. You know, I appreciate that you all are trying to hold yourselves accountable. And, you know, I'll be here to look over that list. One more aspect of Northview Heights, though, is that the new building that you're talking about, the low-rise?
Yes.
I have a concern that, you know, just with the residents that, you know, won't have an opportunity to live there because it won't house everyone. So, you know, I'd like to see a more comprehensive plan presented to me on where, you know, what your plan is for residents that won't get an opportunity to live in this low-rise.
Definitely, yes. We currently, the high-rise, we have a high vacancy. And also, we have a comprehensive plan for replacement. The HUD requires us only to replace the public housing only 50% of the high-rise. That's the regulation in terms of a site and label standard. So that's why we put the 43 mid-rise building, a new construction we are planning next year. That, and then additional units, so we are also looking at other locations in North Side, in those neighborhoods as well, scattered sites and otherwise. And then also some small-scale infill housing developments, yeah, for replacement.
Okay, yeah, early on, I was part of just the thought, you know, some brainstorming of where another low-rise could go on the North Side. So I'm happy to still be a part of those conversations, but I would like to, if you could send that over to, you know, we're just scheduled another meeting with me and my staff so we can understand, you know, how that's all going to take place. All right?
Sure. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your time.
That all, Mr. Wilson?
That's it. Thanks.
Sure. We are also joined by Councilman Daniel Lovell. And I see, I think we'll go next to President Kalesmith. President Smith, do you have any questions for the Housing Authority?
Actually, I do. And I apologize, I'm in my vehicle, so I'm pulled over here. So I just, a few things that I heard during the questioning and that I have some concerns with. And I heard a lot of questions about Northview Heights and some of the maintenance of the properties for Housing Authority. And you don't have that many, so as you did in the past. But my concern is, I've heard a lot of the maintenance department being cut back. And so I'm wondering if that's why you're not able to meet the goals of making sure that we're maintaining affordable, decent housing for our residents and your facilities. So could you talk to us a little bit about that maintenance department? How has it grown? How has it cut back? Any challenges?
Yes. Good morning. Again, this is Marsha Grayson. As far as our maintenance, our facility services department, we have had a lot of challenges as far as the number of staff, people who have been on board. As previously mentioned, some of that had to do with the city residency requirement. However, now...
I'm gonna stop right there. I just want to say, I find it insulting to our residents that we cannot find people to work for PWSA, Housing Authority, none of the authorities, or in some cases for the city of Pittsburgh, that we have to go outside of the city of Pittsburgh as if there's some magical person outside of the city of Pittsburgh that no one exists like them in the city of Pittsburgh. I find it insulting, because then I find it also an excuse to lift the residency requirement. I don't, I don't, I don't trust that that's the reason that we're not finding people. It may be pay, it may be other things, but qualifications certainly isn't. We cannot be that void of employees in the city of Pittsburgh, especially when I know so many people looking and waiting for jobs.
Yes, ma'am. My comments were not meant to say that there were not qualified people within the city of Pittsburgh. Certainly, I agree with you wholeheartedly. There are many qualified people within the city of Pittsburgh. However, a lot of the applicants that we were getting were not city of Pittsburgh applicants. And then when the city requirement was mentioned, we were not able to retain those persons. And then we have a lot of aged workforce. We have the luxury of having long-term employees with the Housing Authority of the city of Pittsburgh. And a lot of our employees are looking now to retire, they are at retirement age. And so we are looking to fill those positions. We have a new maintenance facility service person who is an architect and expert in that area, and the person of Jacqueline Malone. She has recently come on board, I don't believe that she's even here for six months, and she's making a significant difference within that department. And we're seeing growth, we're seeing units being turned for occupancy. And we are working diligently with HUD as well...
Could you please give me a list of the employees and how that department in particular has grown or changed? Could you get me something in writing so that we can see the changes in that department? Because that might help us understand why we're struggling with places like Northview Heights and other places. And I'd also like to say that if you're, and I'm going to end it with this, if you're having applicants apply that do not live in the city of Pittsburgh, and it says clearly on the application process, must be a city resident, and yet you're losing those people when they find out. I don't know that that's the kind of, that's, I don't know that that speaks volumes or speaks highly to their abilities, because if they can't see that clearly on an application process, I don't know. If we lose them, then maybe they'll go work in their city. But I feel like our residents are paying taxes, and yet we're not doing the best we can to attract them to these jobs. And I'd like to see more collaboration with the Pittsburgh Public Schools in preparing some of their students for some of the jobs that we have in the city of Pittsburgh, not just with Housing Authority, but with all the authorities and within the city of Pittsburgh. I know we do some work, I'd like to see that expanded a little bit. That's my only comment. Thank you all for everything you do. And I do want to say, I appreciate knowledge and everything that he does when he attends our community meetings. He does a great job, he's actually helped build a lot of relationships with Housing Authority that were broken in the past. And he's done a great job, so I just want to acknowledge him and his work. And I want to thank the Director for making sure that he's involved in the community as much as he is. So thank you all for your work. Thank you.
Thank you. President Smith, I believe we have at the table Councilwoman Lovell. Councilwoman Lovell, do you have any questions for the Housing Authority?
I have none at this time, Councilwoman. Thank you.
If you will allow me, I have a few of my own questions. What I didn't hear, I heard a little bit in Mr. Strellick's presentation, but I've got some other sources in front of me, some media sources. And I know that council members and myself are all very concerned about the conditions of the maintenance at these apartments, because we know we're in such incredibly pressured housing market. We have really many, we're many, many thousands of units short of affordable housing, and so we can't afford for these units to be substandard and for people to feel that they need to move out of them because of the standard maintenance is so low. But I wanted to recap a little bit about, you know, we are still in this very long, going on two years global pandemic, and we still have a lot of pressure on households for all kinds of economic pressure on households. And, you know, we still have food shortages, we know that people are still really struggling. And so I wanted to give you an opportunity to kind of recap, you know, your last year. And I know that I'm looking at some numbers from a year ago in December of 2020 that says the Housing Authority is sheltering some 7,755 households. And that's either in its own apartments or through Housing Choice voucher program, also known as Section Eight. But then there were also, last year, 11,828 households on the authority's waiting list. And Director Banian promised to throw everything at the wall to try to solve that problem. And I wanted to give you an opportunity to talk about those numbers. Where do we stand today?
Yes, as far as the waiting list for the Housing Authority, we do have a long waiting list. Specifically, in addition to the Housing Choice voucher program, we also have waiting lists for project-based vouchers that is included in that number as well as with our low-income, our low-income public housing. We have digitalized most of our processes to accommodate the last two years that the nation has experienced with COVID in order to move forward with the waiting list, to reduce the waiting list. The Housing Authority has taken advantage of several of the waivers that HUD has provided specifically. We have taken advantage of self-certification waivers, which will assist participants as well as applicants as far as the paperwork is concerned. We have put most of our forms online and use Adobe Sign so that residents and participants, applicants, do not have to leave their home in order to come down to submit applications. Those that do not have the capability of a computer or the savvy to navigate the computer, we have drop boxes in our 200 Ross Street area as well as our 100 Ross Street area. And we also have a virtual room where persons can come and use the computer and get in contact with persons with the Housing Authority. We have processed approximately a minimum of 6,000 applications for persons who are on the waiting list. We're in competition with ourselves, as I stated. We have, we have legacy buildings, but in addition, many of the new buildings that the Housing Authority is responsible for throughout the city of Pittsburgh, those are newer buildings and people are on multiple waiting lists. So as far as moving forward in that process, the Housing Authority is going through to assure that we do have, that we are ferreting through all of the applications to give people an opportunity for housing. I hope I've answered your question.
Did you really hear any numbers? But so...
I can, yes. I can certainly pull up the numbers very quickly.
I appreciate that you tried to pivot and... I appreciate that you've tried to pivot and um help people, you know, stay socially distanced, but also conveniently apply for vouchers or for units. Um, I am really impressed by these numbers, though, when I'm looking at a year ago, 7,755 households. Um, there's probably, you know, you have senior households. It may be a single-person household, but you probably have many families as well. So it's really a significant portion of the city population, right? A few percent of the city population are housed in your units. Um, or um paid for by the vouchers. Uh, but then so many more on the waitlist than you actually are able to house. So you could be housing more than double that. I know that in the past, while while you're looking for numbers in the past, we have um talked about the challenge of getting landlords to participate in the voucher program. And I'm reading from the same source, which is actually a public source news article from um December 29th, 2020, that you were offering a $1,000 bonus to landlords. Are you still offering those bonuses for landlords to become approved?
Yes. Yes, we're offering um the landlord bonus. Uh, and in addition, um that that was phase one of our plan. Uh, phase one has um now um expired. And we're now in phase two where we're looking for new landlords who have not been on the program or who have been off of the program for um a minimum of 12 months. And we are offering that $1,000 bonus to those persons. We're also offering um assisting with the uh security deposits uh for for tenants. So those are some of the things um that we are doing. We have a landlord liaison for the Housing Choice voucher program who is dedicated to working directly with landlords, and she's involved with recruiting. We are partnered with um, we are chosen, we have been chosen as part of a HUD demonstration. Um, we have emergency housing vouchers um that we were awarded 142 emergency housing vouchers. Um, and those vouchers are for persons who are homeless and who um have been uh involved with domestic violence. And um so there are a lot of recruitment um in that regard as well. So the authority.
All being utilized, the emergency, you've got 1,000 emergency vouchers, which is fantastic.
142 emergency housing vouchers.
Thank you. Uh, are those all in use?
I'm sorry, ma'am.
Are they in use? Uh, so are.
We have.
People have used the vouchers and have housing, because there is sometimes a problem with people not being able to find housing that will accept their vouchers. And then even like they've been on a waitlist for vouchers, then they have to um return the voucher unused.
As far as the emergency housing vouchers are concerned, it's a special program. And HUD has waived a lot of the um the paperwork that uh was previously in place. In addition, HUD has given us funding um specifically to assist people in securing housing, in securing land landlords. There are, in addition to um the landlord incentive of the $1,000 bonus, we have um um incentives that if a person is actually in a house and is about to get evicted, we look to recruit that landlord as to maintain that person in housing and become a Housing Choice voucher landlord. We have um at this point a 62% utilization rate. And we have staff that are dedicated solely to the emergency housing vouchers. In addition, we are partnering with a continuum of care through the Allegheny County Department of Human Services, who makes the referrals of persons uh to the Housing Authority for the emergency housing vouchers. And many of the persons um who are referred have caseworkers who are there to hand help them through the process. So this is a little different than um the Housing uh Choice voucher program where people are a little more independent.
Right, got it. Um, well, I don't want to keep you here too long, but it it is often a topic of conversation, because we know we've been struggling now for years um with uh an affordable housing crisis in the city. Um, and we want to make sure that we are doing all that we can um to use our city's housing authority to its, you know, maximum capacity. Now, in order to try to to try to bring these numbers, frankly, right? Um, we we are only making, it seems like, small chips away, chipping away at a very large problem, very small hammers. Uh, and so we're always looking to try to learn um and trying to listen to try to figure out um how we can can tackle a problem. I'm using all kinds of metaphors, but I think you understand what I'm saying. All right, I don't want to keep you here any longer. We are moving on to the Parking Authority. Thank you all for being um and I'm going to allow you to be um taken out of the Zoom room and ask our thank you all. Thank you all for your answers today and for being here.
Thank you very much. We'll take a look forward to the information you requested.
Yes, all of the information, yes.
Appreciate it. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, too.
Thank you. Same to you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Feiner. If you could um switch our panelists and and the Parking Authority representatives. Hello, Mr. Honorado.
Good morning, Councilwoman Kraus. Councilwoman Kraus, sorry.
Good to see you. Good to see you. Um, we are just letting our decisions make our switches here. Um, I'll uh move on to um back to Mr. Strellick to give council a recap of the Parking Authority's budget impact on the city. And then we'll turn it over to you, Mr. Honorado.
Thank you. Uh, do we have the Parking Authority with us now? The mission statement of the Parking Authority is to provide uh and maintain affordable, safe and public parking facilities through the city of Pittsburgh to uniformly enforce parking ordinances and laws of the city and the Commonwealth and the collections thereof to advance the economic progress of the region and to do so with the utmost commitment to customer service. Uh, the Parking Authority is responsible for 11 parking garages, 34 off-street lots, the tended parking plaza, the Mon Wharf, and over 9,000 on-street metered spaces, and 33 residential parking program districts. Um, and the executive director may have to correct me. I think we've closed some of the lots uh since then. Um, Councilman Wilson is council's representative on the Parking Authority Board. Uh, the Parking Authority's had a lot of budgetary challenges with their uh their own budget. But this, of course, is a uh a city budget hearing. So a couple of points about how the Parking Authority touches our budget. Uh, they provide a number of revenue sources, of course. Uh, all of them have taken hits due to the pandemic. Uh, Parking Authority tickets were estimating about $7.4 million to the city this year. It's about the same as what we collected in uh the last pre-pandemic year of 2019. Daily parking meters, we anticipate about 6.3 million. That's a decrease of 35% from 2019. Uh, authority payments is down to zero. Uh, so City Council um abated the requirement to pay the uh former $1.9 million payment in lieu of taxes for 10 years. So hope to get that back in 2031 when they're on better financial footing. Um, we also have a small wharf parking uh payment to the city of about $100,000. That's a 65% decrease from 2019. Um, the Parking Authority, of course, also collects the 37.5% parking tax on all their uh lots and garage receipts. Um, citywide, uh, we anticipate uh collecting about 7% lo- uh less in Parking Authority, not Parking Authority revenue, parking tax revenue than what we collected in pre-pandemic 2019. Uh, and that's all I have on notes about how the Parking Authority affects the city's budgets.
Thank you, Mr. Strellick. Um, Mr. Honorado.
With everything you you basically summarized the authority, uh, we're down to 32 uh neighborhood surface lots. Um, we did uh uh our board did approve our 2022 budget at our uh last week's board meeting in November. Uh, with that budget, it was passed uh without going through the line items. Michael went through. Uh, we're projecting the city $15.4 million based on the line items Michael discussed. Uh, park is for parking court, on-street meter revenues, Mon Wharf, uh, and and parking tax. And then uh two smaller line items would be real estate taxes and parking licenses. Uh, we approved a budget for 2022 of $39.6 million. Of that 39.6, 26.2%, 26.2 million dollars come from revenues, which uh is about 66% of our revenues. And 12.3 million will come from meter revenues, which is 31%. So those two line items make up uh just over 97% of our gross revenues for the budget. Uh, we also do a parking court budget. Uh, it's separate from our uh uh authority's budget of $7 million. If you combine the two budgets, there will have a total revenues of $47.2 million, combining the authority's budget and parking court budget. And uh Michael was right, it's a significant hit to our our budget. We're currently at about 50% utilization for our garages system-wide. And where we're used to be to uh prior to the pandemic, we were above 98%, 99% utilization. And meter revenues are off too, due to uh uh employees of uh private entities working from home or remotely, which, you know, we have no control of. I think uh trying to stay in touch with the different companies and the PDP, uh PNC, Melwin, and Highmark, and a couple of large uh legal firms have yet to uh mandate their employees come back to town. So that's why our parking is still significantly off. And uh our payments to the city are based on the amended co-op agreement we did with the city of, as Michael stated, uh waiving the pilot payment for 10 years and uh the authority picking up an additional $1 million in meter revenues for four years.
Thank you. Um, I'll turn it over to members. Um, I'll go still in order. Um, Councilman Strasberger, do you have any questions?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Director Honorado. It's great to see you again virtually, and thanks for being here today.
Thank you.
I miss our monthly uh board meetings and being able to see everyone face-to-face.
We haven't had a board meeting either in person for probably for a long time.
For sure, I understand. Well, I was um really just hoping to get to, you know, the issue, again, not so much a city budget issue, but really just hearing your strategy for um, you know, sort of a five-year strategy for helping to make up um for the 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 shortfalls, especially with wharf parking, especially with daily parking meter parking. Um, we don't have a crystal ball. We don't know what everything.
Recording in progress.
By the end of five years, our projections only show that uh parking will come back at 80%, which we've uh estimate to be the new norm going forward. We don't believe we'll get back to where we were uh parking vehicles that time.
And that's, I think, what we've, you know, maybe been talking about as uh and I say we, when I was on the board of the Parking Authority for for a while. And maybe this is one of those cases where uh global pandemics simply accelerated what we thought might be coming in the next 20, 10 to 20 years anyway. So um i- if you care to share any thoughts about the future with the expectation that we're going to be at 80% in the next five years, um and that that might be the new norm, what is?
Uh, Pittsburgh's already ahead of curve working with the city and Domi. Uh, it's not just in Pittsburgh. It's kind of industry-wide throughout the country. Uh, how do you manage curbside parking going forward? Uh, you know, do we call, how do, uh, it's not just for uh vehicle parking now, and as the city has already done it with Domi at the lead, uh, you know, we're uh using curbside spaces for uh restaurants, uh for Uber and Lyft pickups, for bicycles, for uh scooters and for bike lanes. So all this, uh, uh, I think it's going to be a switch to the curbside uses. And that probably even goes into the garages somehow. Uh, I know we're looked at uh possibilities of using garage levels for other uh purposes other than parking. Maybe they become drop-off stages for uh deliveries and or Uber Lyft pickups. So we continue to evaluate the options that are available to offset the lost revenue from just uh the um straight parking.
And I know that you are very, very um clued into and connected to your counterparts across the country. And so I'm sure that what Pittsburgh is doing is being looked at by other cities across the country and vice versa, that you're uh understanding that, you know, the vanguard uh cities when it comes to new technologies or just new strategies around parking management and curbside management and the other ways that similar authorities or entities are dealing with this. But um I guess from a council perspective, one request that I'll just say publicly, because I don't know if other council members feel the same way. But um, you know, as great as it is to be able to go online, to you know, work through a dashboard and be able to see everything and take care of permitting or take care of RPP management or to be able to send an email. There are a whole lot of people out there who just want to be able to pick up the phone and be walked through that process with someone on the other line. And I know from um my experiences, if someone calls and they get a voice message, they're always going to get a call back. But um, you know, within your budget limitations, anything you're able to do to just have someone there dedicated to answering the phone and helping navigate through any kind of issue, whether it might be um uh, you know, renewing an RPP permit or answering a question about how RPP uh residential permit parking areas can be extended or, you know, a parking ticket or really anything. Um, I know that that would serve us as council members well. And, you know, your staff are wonderful and they're responsive. But my sense is probably that there's just too big of a volume of emails and calls to be able to, you know, uh, solve everyone right at right on the spot. So that would be one one thing that, you know, uh, I know would be helpful to council, some council members is is being able to direct someone to a phone number in case they have questions. Uh, and of course, we do the same thing as council members and our staff, but having a counterpart um in Parking Authority just there to answer phones and answer questions.
I don't disagree with you. I think uh part of our job is customer service and that customer service is via the phone or emails. And uh even though we're short-staffed like everybody else right now, we do have in the 2022 budget some uh money for some positions. But uh our goal is to uh, if we can't answer the phone when it's uh ringing, to return or acknowledge a person's uh voicemail or email within 24 hours. Maybe not with the answer, but acknowledge we have it. We'll get back to them once we have the resolution.
Thank you. Thank you, Director. Thank you, Madam Chair. That's the extent of my questions.
Thank you. Um, Councilman Wilson?
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Miss Chair. So I um wanted to just say, um, you know, it's been a pleasure serving on the Parking Authority Board and and, you know, even though the times have been quite uh quite rough over there, um, especially in terms of finances. Could you just paint the picture of like what we did um, you know, to uh to relieve? Could you just paint the picture of like what we did um, you know, to uh to relieve the Parking Authority? Basically, you know, what we did in the co-op that that um you know, will get the Parking Authority in a better place for the next few years. Could you just go over that one little small piece again, Dave?
Sure, the the uh uh co-op was amended in twenty fifteen and then uh was riding well the past three years from twenty nineteen, twenty seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, prior to the pandemic, based on that co-op agreement. Uh, we were able to give the city thirty million dollars based on the calculations uh based on the co-op agreement. Then when the pandemic hit and the authority received uh was not eligible to receive any federal fundings, uh, city worked with us to amend the co-op agreement. And what it did, uh, the old co-op agreement, the authority was entitled to the first million dollars of meter revenues and the city received uh and uh credit card fees and contract fees. And the city received all the other uh net meter revenue money. With the amended co-op agreement, the four point six was uh, there was a million dollars added to the four point six. So the authority keeps the first five point six million dollars of meter revenues. And now the balance goes to the city. And then uh the additional amendment to the co-op was the pilot payment. Uh, annually, we give the city one point nine million dollars in lieu of payment of taxes. And uh city agreed to waive that for ten years uh to help us get on our feet financially. And the additional million dollars of meter revenue is only for four years and not the uh ten. They were changes to the co-op agreement that helped us get through the pandemic and be a little solvent along with all our expenses and uh reductions we made at the authority itself.
Thanks for your cooperation that um, you know, it's just astounding to hear that we're at like a fifty percent level. Like, could you imagine if the city said we're at a fifty percent level? You know, with people that are paying us uh, you know, taxes or, you know, how we get revenue. Um, so really like, you know, just quite simply, like, how were we able to to stay afloat at the parking? I mean, I I know I know these questions, but I'm just like, I think it'd be good for the public just to know, like, how we're actually able to stay afloat with all these different changes.
Yes, uh, you know, uh, from the efforts and support of the board and yourself, Bobby, we were able to reduce a lot of our expenses. Uh, we're very careful on what we spend money on. Uh, twenty twenty, we took a significant reduction in capital expenses. We only did the uh safety issue repairs. Uh, the other big one was the uh refinancing of the debt I mentioned earlier. And also uh in twenty nineteen, we suspended security at the lowest point of the pandemic where we were under ten percent utilization in the garages, believe it was for five or six months. And that saved us a significant, probably about two hundred and twenty thousand a month. Uh, and then looked at our uh spending through each department and uh we cracked down on our our spending and just try, we were very mindful of the money we were spending.
And when you say fifty percent, I mean, that's not fifty percent elsewhere than downtown, right? Like in Oakland, we're we're doing.
Yeah, system wide, uh fifty percent system wide on average. Uh, Oakland, we have one garage is the uh Forbes Simple Garage. Uh, that garage today is doing over ninety percent and that's due to the the location uh with the university and the hospitals there. So the downtown garages are probably a little lower than fifty percent or probably around forty four. But on average, system wide, but you're correct, Bobby, that's not downtown only.
Yeah, we're guilty of it too. Look, we're all on Zoom.
Yes.
So uh, all right, well, I I just want to thank you, Dave, for um, you know, recently you, you know, I you help uh, you help the city run in a lot of different ways and recently you you helped out with um the AHN Urban Parking and Homelessness Program just to uh help us understand a system that can be put in place so that they could uh, you know, have a um, so they can respond in in some of these RPP areas or uh parking meter zones. So for people that aren't familiar, we have um, we have people who are outreach workers that go and work to the to the people who need it the most. And um basically, we try to implement a a co-response with police EMS um and other public safety situations. And really, if you put in three on one, the AHM program, um, if you put in homelessness for, you know, under three on one uh as like a a subcategory that this team will actually go and respond. And Dave was instrumental in uh assisting uh that program um to uh, you know, be able to uh have a better um, you know, basically give access to the curb side of wherever they need to be. So we, uh, Dave was instrumental in implementing some sort of um uh program where we could get that done. And I just want to thank him publicly for that.
Thank you.
All right, I don't have any further questions.
Councilman, um, I think we have the next Councilman, Lavelle.
Thank you. Um, I do have one question and I apologize if this was already asked because I had to step away for a second. Can you help me understand what you believe the Parking Authority's role will be with our new um permit parking program?
Uh, I from my understanding, which, you know, I don't believe is finalized yet, our role won't change much because I believe uh uh Domi got involved now and they're in agreement that uh they should control the process on if a street should be uh in the RPP program. We'll continue to do the uh issuing of the permits and the enforcement of the program and maybe assist a little more in the uh application process that we did in the past, which wasn't our responsibility. But I think the latest version has uh a lot of the uh duties going from city planning to Domi and us working with Domi in the future.
Ms. Chair.
Approval of uh RPP area would be uh city councils uh would have final approval on that like they do today.
Okay, thank you. Given that you would still be in charge of enforcement, is there any increased funding to support that? Or do you believe you need any?
No, the only increased funding would be if the fees went up because the Parking Authority keeps the revenues from the permits and the visitors pass.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's it for me.
Ms. Chair and Councilman, I'm happy to confirm uh something just to clear the conversation of that. Sorry, my my screen keeps breaking up, but um I'll just. Is that okay? Okay, um, yeah, I can confirm that next week you'll see uh amendment that will say that Domi will be, you know, within the RPP program that the amendment that I'm going to introduce will um leave that curb side management in terms of doing the parking studies and everything that Dave, uh, the Director on Roto went over. That amendment will be, I'm going to introduce that amendment to that RPP program. Right now, it does say Parking Authority, but we've worked it out and uh believe that dummy's the right um party to take that on.
Thank you. That was all for me.
Thank you, Council. And um we had Councilwoman Smith, but it looks like she has left us. Um, so if you don't mind, I'll I'll also ask a few questions. I'm trying to clarify something I thought I heard. Um, when Councilman Strasburger was asking about um garages or you all were, I think, talking about garages and kind of how you were adapting. Um, Director, you were talking about the curb and working with Domi and trying to manage the curb. Am I hearing that that is kind of looks like an opportunity to capture more value or is the is the curb reeks real estate increased in value? Is that, I'm not sure if this is how the industry talks about it, so I'm kind of making it up. Is that kind of, what kind of words do people use?
I don't know if it's increase in value. It's an alternative option for the curb now since the the revenues that we uh are used to having in the past, just from strictly parking will no longer be the sole source on the curb space. So we're looking for alternative revenues to help offset the lost revenues from meter parking or curb side uses because of uh reduction in vehicle uh use.
Sure. Okay, so because the the curb use has changed.
Yes.
Or then we have to kind of adapt with our business model.
Yes, that would be more it than the revenue generated.
It's really interesting and I I look forward to to hearing more about that. I know we've had conversations with Domi around the strip district planning, um where they're trying to uh and it's still a long process. They've only just recently made public some of their ideas for uh transportation management in the strip. Um, we probably have to keep refining that plan. Um, not only do conditions keep changing, but it's like the industry keeps changing. Um, so that we're going to maybe pilot some things for um loading and unloading. Um, but we're we're still having the discussions with the vendors, with the merchants, with the um with the residents in the strip and the and the and the commercial residents too. So that's still, it's like a moving target. It feels like in the strip district at least. Right? Right, so um I'm glad that um Councilman Wilson clarified um the difference in uh garage occupancies because I kind of had the same question. So it's really downtown um and the downtown employers are still remote and so the downtown garage occupancies are lower. But you're also, you've had some return of special events and stadium events and things like that. Um, so you do see some revenue, I'm sure, from those events. And and and.
There has been an increase in uh evening activities.
Good, okay, good to know. And where are the other Parking Authority garages? So you have downtown, you have that one in Oakland, you have some on the North Shore.
Nothing on the North Shore. We have uh eight garages in the downtown area, one in Oakland, one in Shady Side. And then we have the two man surface lots, the Mon Wharf is downtown and the Second Avenue on the outskirts of downtown. Uh, the authority has no garages or surface lots on the North Shore. All we control over there are the meters, uh, street meters.
And how is the street meter revenue going and is there a kind of occupancy number that?
Uh, we are giving comparison on the revenues there. Uh, we're uh, that's ramping back up quicker than the garages. Uh, we're probably uh slightly ahead of uh two thirds of the revenues back, we're seeing back on a daily basis.
Good to know. It's it's like in COVID times, we are are because people's work schedules are, some people's work schedules are flexible. I would expect their kind of daily errands and habits and destinations are slightly different as well, but they're still, they're still leaving their house and many of us leave the house in a car and have to do something with the car. Yes, our destination.
Yeah, on average, prior to the pandemic, we probably did about sixty two thousand dollars a day on meter revenues. Uh, we're averaging right now around uh fifty one thousand dollars a day. So we're still off the pre-pandemic, but we're we're coming closer to it now.
Interesting. So we have a love hate relationship in a way with the Parking Authority, right? Because so many of us are working on trying to allow people to travel there and to get their daily needs and to travel and to live not having to own a car. Um, and yet we still are um kind of hosting activities like the big event, but also employment, we're happy to be an employment center. And we have a lot of people who come to their work in their car. Um, so we're just going to keep adjusting as we go. I'd like, if I'd like um to, I'd like to shift the topic a little bit if I may, which is um you also own properties and you own a property in um Bloomfield that is the um empty lot behind the Saint Joseph Church, which is the main church in the center of Bloomfield, um, which has been um mostly closed, not entirely closed by the diocese the church has. And you acquired the property let's say twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen.
You're you're in the ballpark, yes. I don't remember.
And it was a bit contentious at the time uh because um splitting that lot away from the shuttered church property made a lot of people fear that that made the church property less developable, keeping the church. And the community wants to be sure that the diocese does not tear down Saint Joseph's Church. And um the diocese wants to tear down Saint Joseph's Church. So keeping that parcel that is empty behind the church available for repurposing the church in a collaborative kind of development is the community's goal. But I know that you have talked about selling. My fear, and this isn't only directed at the Parking Authority, so don't take it personally. I've directed the same fear at the county, at the school district, at the city, at the URA, is that our role as the governmental bodies is not to use the properties in my district as a cash machine. Is to not to sell them off just because it's a hot market and you can get some cash. And I've said it to every single one of these, the other bodies. I, P W A as well. Just because you have it and I know there's a high land value in my district, that doesn't mean you get to liquidate it and and act like a land speculator, right? It is not our job to be land speculators. Um, and so Bloomfield has a registered community organization that is, you know, tasked and has the responsibility and jurisdiction to participate in planning processes. And I know there has not been engagement around um this lot with the registered community organization, the Bloomfield Development Corporation. And so I'm going to ask you to do that before you make any moves um to plan a future for the parcel that you own there. Uh, and I would love to hear your commitment to that.
No, I I I hear you and thank you for the question. Uh, we're currently working, I thought, did the URA did reach out to the community groups out there. We're early in the stages with the URA on issuing an RFP for that lot to see what the highest and best use of a development would be on that parcel. Preferably, I believe it's been a uh RFP would prefer housing on that spot.
Well, an RFP doesn't have an opinion, but the community group does. So we'll ask that.
Okay.
Right, so um, thank you for that. I know that we've been willing to do that in the past when it was a very contentious topic. Um, and you were.
Yes.
accommodate um and and engage the community on that and other issues around parking um more specific to your to your role. Um, and I I want to thank you for that. And there has been, you've you've been able to make some changes at the other surface lots that really did help. Um, it it keeps shifting and changing a little bit, so it's probably time to revisit, but um the changes that you were able to make a few years ago were really helpful. Um, so I look forward to that conversation. Um, and like I said, don't take it personally. I've certainly pushed back on any other governments and authorities trying to just get a getting really excited about the land value on properties they own in my district, but it's our goal, it's our responsibility to fulfill community needs. Um, and so that that's uh, that's my aim is. Uh, are there any other questions from members? Okay, I don't hear any. So thank you, Director, for your time and attention.
Thank you. And I would just like to uh thank Councilman Wilson uh for being a board member, but not only a board member, he's an active member and uh you know, I think we have a good board and uh we always get support from the board and uh Bobby's a good uh part of that board. And again, he's very active a member of the board, which is uh good from my standpoint. So thank you, Councilman.
Wonderful. Happy Thanksgiving to you and I'll ask your finer to to take you out of our panel and um I hope you have a good weekend.
Hey, happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Hope you get to have a long weekend.
All right, thanks, Dave.
And Mr. Finer, if you could bring in the Stadium and Exhibition Authority. That will be just for the audience, that it will be our last authority for this budget hearing. This morning, we will recess. Uh, we will reconvene at one thirty. With, I believe, P W S A and Al Kassan and that might be it for the afternoon session. And we have um, let's see, the Stadium Exhibition Authority members, yep, they're coming. Uh, but I'll allow uh Mr. Astralik to start with his summary for council members.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, Sports and Exhibition Authority, it's a successor to the
Uh, Sports and Exhibition Authority, it's a successor to the Public Authority, Authority of Pittsburgh and Allegheny County. Uh, the name was changed back in nineteen ninety nine as the S C A, uh, began work with the, the state, the city and the county to implement, uh, what we now call the Rad District. Uh, the plan supported the construction of P N C Park, Heinz Field, the expansion of the Convention Center, um, as well as related infrastructure improvements. Uh, S C A owned facilities include the P N C Park, Heinz Field, P P G Paints Arena and the Convention Center, as well as the site of the former Mellon Arena, North Shore Riverfront Park and a couple of, uh, North Shore parking garages. So the, the questions from the Parking Authority are about those North Shore garages for, or for this meeting. The S C A consists of seven members, three of whom are appointed by the county and three, uh, by the city. And the seventh, uh, is by the city and the county jointly. Uh, Councilman Coghill is council's representative on the S C A. Uh, this, this budget hearing also includes the Stadium Authority, uh, which is staffed by the S C A. But the Stadium Authority still exists and continues to own the land that Three Rivers Stadium, uh, once existed on. Couple of budget notes, how it affects the city's budget. Um, uh, the operating budget impact, the S A collects much of the city's amusement tax revenue. Um, the amusement tax we're estimating, uh, will be increased by one point four million or nine percent from what was collected, actually collected in pre pandemic twenty nineteen. Uh, they also collect the non resident sport facility usage fee uh, that we do not anticipate getting back to, uh, pre pandemic levels. Uh, about eight hundred thousand dollars or sixteen percent below what was actually collected in twenty nineteen. Uh, S C A also has an impact on our capital budget. Uh, they're the project manager for the I five seventy nine cap project. Um, one closeout piece of that is the restoration of the Cantini mural that was removed before that was constructed. That's gonna cost the city, uh, about seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars to reconstruct. Um, also, the city will be responsible for the operating and maintenance costs once, uh, that project is closed out and the S C A, um, deeds it to the city. Uh, that's all I have on, um, city budget impacts. I'm gonna turn it back to, uh, Councilwoman or the S C A.
Thank you, Mike. Um, I see we have Director Conturo here. Welcome. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good. Thank you for joining us through Zoom. And, um, and for waiting through the other hearings. Um, I'll just like to, um, give your own summary or presentation.
Uh, sure, just quickly, um, uh, as far as debt goes, there is no debt of the S C A or the Stadium Authority that the city is obligated on. Uh, there was a period of time when that wasn't true, but as of a couple of years ago, there, there is no debt responsibility on the city part. Um, just to, and I, I know Michael gave some information about the amusement tax and the parking tax that our, our facilities and the events at those facilities, uh, do generate a, a good part of your amusement tax and your parking tax. And just to give you a, uh, sort of a frame of reference of where we are in terms of that in twenty nineteen, our facilities generated about twelve point four million in amusement tax for you. In twenty twenty, they generated only four point four million. Uh, this year, we don't have the twenty twenty one numbers that we think they've improved from twenty twenty, but, uh, not to where they were, uh, in twenty nineteen. Uh, about the same is true for the parking tax. Our facilities generated in twenty nineteen, six point seven million in parking tax for the city. Uh, in twenty twenty, that went down to three point two million. And it has rebounded somewhat this year, but not to the twenty nineteen levels. Those are probably the, the biggest, uh, financial, easily measured financially impacts, uh, to the city. Uh, uh, not taking into account the, the economic impact of just having events and, and what that generates and the employment, uh, that is provided by the events. In terms of our budgeting process, uh, the Convention Center, as you may recall, uh, operates at a deficit and, and we had gotten to the point where that, that operating shortfall was covered by excess hotel tax revenue that was counted, uh, collected by the city every year. Um, the hotel tax revenue, of course, took a big hit through the pandemic. So last year, so the, the first year of the pandemic in twenty twenty, we filled that gap by some hotel tax and all the operating reserves really that, that we had. For this year, for twenty twenty one, um, the Stadium Authority, uh, provided a grant to the S C A and that provided the operating income for the year coming up. Uh, twenty twenty two, we've been in conversations with the county and the county is, um, looking to fill that gap with a combination of either hotel, of hotel tax money and, and federal pandemic recovery money. And I, I'm not clear exactly of, uh, what program that's coming in, coming through or what that mix will be. So that is, uh, what we're looking forward to, um, for our budget for next year. So in, in addition to maintaining our four facilities, you probably recall that, that we own Heinz Field, P N C Park, the arena and the Convention Center. Uh, the sports facilities are leased to the sports teams and they're responsible for routine maintenance and for daily operations. Uh, we have capital repair responsibilities and that's another, um, uh, budgeting issue that, that we're constantly looking to see uh, what projects are coming up and, and what funding we have, uh, to maintain those facilities. Um, and, uh, with respect to the Convention Center, we both are owner and operator, which is why we're the ones looking, uh, for the operating funding that I mentioned to you. In addition to owning those, uh, facilities, we own three standalone parking facilities on the North Shore and, uh, the parking garage at, uh, the Convention Center and some open air parking lots. And that's a combination between the Stadium Authority and the S C A. Um, many of the open air parking lots are parking until the land is developed. Some of it is for land under the overpasses that we lease from PennDOT. It really isn't developable land. Um, so those parking facilities, we financed through a joint, um, borrowing, a public borrowing with the city, with the Stadium Authority and the S C A. Uh, so that's where the majority of those parking revenues are going to pay off that debt. So then they, the, the last major responsibility we have is overseeing the development of the land between Heinz Field and P N C Park and the Lower Hill Development Land, which we own a portion of and the U R A owns a portion of. So that's what we do.
Thank you, Director. I, I think I relearn every year that on those parking garages on the North Shore. Like in between the budget hearings, I forget and I have to relearn it again in the next December. So thank you, Mr. Stellican. Thank you, Director. Um, Councilwoman Strasburg, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Conturo, for being here once again this year. Um, I don't have any questions. I simply wanted to congratulate you on the ribbon cutting for the, I said, the five seventy nine cap and the new park. One of these days, we'll stop calling it the five seventy nine cap and we'll actually just refer to it as the name of the park. But, um, there was a huge undertaking and, um, uh, cobbling together funding sources and different entities and bureaucracy and it's, it's finally completed. So just a big congratulations to that and, um, uh, wish you the best as you continue to work with us to restore the Cantina mural and that project. And, and then, um, you know, everything that you are seeking to do to continue to, uh, maintain all of these structures and spaces as we recover from the pandemic. So that's the extent of my, of my comments and questions.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, Councilman Wilson?
Yes, uh, nice to, uh, see you again and I want to thank you for, uh, just a nice overview. I know I always learn some stuff, uh, as well. Um, probably, uh, you know, what's most, um, what's most, uh, you, you know, the, the most interesting one is how we own the, the stadiums. And that's always the, the reason why people think we can make the Pirates better by somehow. I'll leave, I'll leave it that. I just, you know, it always comes up every year. Hey, did you know that we actually own it and that's how we can make them better? So, um, all right, well, last year, um, you were, you mentioned some developments on the North Shore and, and specifically the part of the North Shore that, that I represent and which prompted a, a, a great meeting over about the development um, that the S C A is involved with on some of those, um, parcels. Do you have any updates at this time for some of those developments that you were, um, that we went over in that meeting?
Uh, yes, the, the one parcel that has housing associated with it is actually before the Planning Commission this afternoon. So, um, if you recall, pre pandemic, the idea was that it was going to be part office building and part residential condo units. Um, uh, that when the pandemic hit, the idea of building office space didn't make sense to the developers anymore. And the idea of, um, larger residential, um, condos didn't seem to make sense. The idea of just rental units, they thought the market was better suited to that. So about a year ago, the, the Stadium Authority agreed to that change and they've been working on that development, um, the plans. And so they're, they've been going through the process now and they're, they're to the point where I believe they're gonna start that project closed by the end of this year and started, um, the beginning of next year. So that'll provide, I think, about a hundred and ten, uh, residential units at the corner of North Shore Drive and Mazaroski Way. Um, and then, uh, if you recall, behind that, um, at Mazaroski Way and West General Robinson Street, there was the idea of a plaza um, there at the front door of P N C Park. And that idea has been, uh, uh, further developed and, and that's still the use that, that's being looked at for that corner. Uh, and then catty corner across the street from that included in that project is, um, some greening of, of that corner to, to shield the parking lot, basically. So if you recall that, there's a, one other development parcel left over there um, that, there's been no activity on as of yet. It's called Lot Two, if you remember that one.
Mm hmm. Yeah, um, I, I can't keep them all
I know. I will send you a diagram, okay?
Yeah, um, so with the, um, so with the hundred and ten units, how many other units are there on these other ones?
That'll be the first housing that, that is in that area between Heinz Field and P N C Park.
Right, but you, you're mentioning, you're mentioning some other possible developments too, though, right?
Yeah, there's some private developers that are looking at areas, um, closer to P N C Park and on the other side of P N C Park. And, and then on, near the Science Center, uh, those aren't parcels that we own, but I, I know their interest in those areas as well.
Okay. All right, um, does the, uh, I mean, on, on, on the properties that are left on there, are there, you know, are you possibly gonna do other developments that would involve housing units?
Um, don't know yet. Um, a good, there's an option agreement with the joint venture of the Pirates and the Steelers. And so, uh, they really are the ones to develop it if they're developing, if they're staying within the, the, the terms of the option agreement. So I, I don't expect, though, that that next parcel that they would begin to, to work on until they have this, uh, rental complex well underway.
Okay.
Just by virtue of how things have gone in the past.
Okay. All right, well, um, thanks and I look forward to
I'll send, I'll send you a drawing and, and give you a call, though, okay?
Okay, all right, thanks.
And, um, Mr. Wilson?
Yes, thanks.
Um, we still have Councilman Lavelle as well. Councilman, do you have any questions for the S C A?
No questions, um, just thank, uh, Director Conturo for all her work.
Thank you.
Um, and Mr. Director Conturo, I don't really have any specific questions either. Um, except maybe following up on the last conversation with the Parking Authority. Since, um, you have, I think I wrote it down correctly, there's some three, three parking facilities on the North Shore and the one parking facility downtown at the Convention Center. So what kinds of occupancy are you seeing there? And have you felt like the need to reconsider, um, the uses of those structures?
Uh, the daily parking really hasn't come back. The, the event parking has started to come back. Um, and so, um, I don't think we are at the point of, of considering any changes in, in the, uh, in the structures themselves. Um, I think we're, we just still see a gradual growth in daily parking. Um, and until we don't see that anymore, uh, I don't think we would consider anything different. The, the one thing that, that our parking garages on the North Shore help with, I think, is that, um, there's the, the L R T site, um, there's a, a, um, station right in our West General Robinson Street garage. So it, it's a good structure for cars from the north to come and park in. And then there's a free L R T ride to town. So it, it keeps cars out of the downtown area, which, um, I think is helpful. Uh, and, uh, so we're, we're hoping that someday people decide to come back to town to work again and, and then we'll be ready for them.
Sure, there's so much uncertainty. Um, out of curiosity, do you know if your parking garages, any, any of the facilities are, were built to be convertible? So I, I've had parking converted to other uses in my district. Um, so it's not just a hypothetical. So on Bond Boulevard, a, um, uh, a parking garage attached to the Aldi, the upstairs floors were converted to office space because the owner was able to show that the Aldi customers weren't using the required number of grocery store parking spaces. Um, and so he was able to keep his office tenant, he was increasing by fifty percent. Went from like eighty employees to a hundred and twenty employees. And they built out that office space into what was previously parking garage. Some of the older garages aren't flexible that way because their ceilings are too low or the, the decks are actually not level.
Right.
So what, do you know if your parking facilities are convertible?
Um, we started looking at that in probably the last, I don't know, seven or eight years when we were looking at We started looking at that in probably the last, I don't know, seven or eight years when we were looking at designing parking garages. And and there was a a cost to actually bring it completely up to that level where you could, just with the flip of the switch, convert it to something. We didn't spend that money, but we took into account what you said about the level floors as opposed to the slanted floors and tried to make it as accommodating as possible without spending the extra, the significant extra funding that that would be required right now. Or at construction, I mean.
Yes, I can see that. And I'm assuming your downtown parking garage is part of the Park App that shows people when they're driving to the city what the occupancy is at that garage, if it's full of their spaces. Not that any of them are full these days, but, you know.
Yeah.
Been always fascinated by that app and that we could add other neighborhoods beyond downtown into that parking app.
And we work with Alco Parking, who runs our parking facilities for us, and there's a few of those apps. And I would have to get back to you about exactly which ones we subscribe to and are part of. But yes.
I think it's a really helpful way to direct people who are coming into the city. They may not be familiar with some of the garages. Maybe they try, always try the same, like two garages they know. It started off in a cultural district because people were having to circle because those garages were filling up. And then, you know, the only way you would know that was you'd actually gotten your way through traffic all the way to the front of the garage. And then there was a little placard out front that said, full.
Right.
And then, you know, you're spending half an hour and adding, you know, something like over thirty percent of the gridlock in the downtown was caused by people circling for parking. We feel that pain sometimes in places like Lawrenceville and in other neighborhoods where there's not a lot of street grid. You know, Southside, I think, gets the same kind of thing. So that there's an app directing people to parking facilities they may not even know about. If they're coming from Bridgeville, and they could say, oh, well, this is close. And that that it's consolidated in an app, I feel like it's it's just helpful for all kinds of issues. So people can plan their evenings in a way that we didn't used to do. And now you're like looking on your phone to see what restaurants are maybe open, certainly these days, especially when hours are closed. And having your kind of trend, being able to plan your transportation in ways. I I'm always trying to encourage people to visit Lawrenceville, for example, but leave their car at home. But maybe it's all visit Lawrenceville, but leave your car, you know, at the Convention Center parking lot.
Well, you're right.
Alternative mobility once you're in the city. So it's you can have, so, you know, if you're coming into the city, you can navigate to a place that you know is well lit, is, you know, a garage you're familiar with, is easy in and out, but then once you're in the city, not having to move your car from destination to destination.
Well, I I should know off the top of my head that I don't. So let me, let me check to see which apps we're on and which garages are on which apps, and I'll let you know.
That I appreciate that. Thank you so much. Does anyone else have any final questions? Wonderful. Well, thank you, Director, for being here with us and also congratulations on your new park and our new park.
Our new park, right.
Really excited about reconnecting those kind of broken pieces of our physical fabric of the city. So really looking forward to to seeing its future.
Thanks, everybody, for all your help and happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving to you and to to all the S C A people. I am going to motion to recess. I don't think I need a motion for members. Do I need a motion for members? Someone can give me a motion to recess. And we'll reconvene at one thirty for El Kassan and P W S A. So thank you for attending today's budget hearing and see you at one thirty. We are in recess.